Number nine, 2014 meeting of Manchester Town Council. First order of the business is the approval of the November 12th minutes. Copy in the packet. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion we approve the November 12th minutes.
A second now.
Motion a second, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second, we have receipt of the November 2014 check register.
I make a motion that we receive the November 14, 2014 check register.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mayor's report. First want to welcome, congratulations and welcome to new Commissioner from our district, Mr. Steve Lance. We're going to hear from him a little later in the evening, but congratulations, looking forward to working with you over the next couple of years. I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Black Friday was, was again put on by MAMA, it was a great event. Hopefully everybody got a chance to come out. A little colder than than normal. We did recognize Ms. Mabel Lippy, Mabel Lippy Day. I think that went well, so thank you to everyone involved with MAMA that had a table or opened up their store either at the Activity Center here at Main Street. Thank you to Chief Hess and the Police Department for their efforts and definitely the Fire Department as well. Couple of quick notices, the offices here will be closed on Wednesday, December 24th and Thursday, December 25th. Will also be closed on Thursday, January 1st for New Year's Day. Christmas tree pickup, we have just one now, right Steve?
That's correct.
We have one on January 8th.
That is correct.
So, we don't have two Christmas tree pickups, so definitely after Christmas you have a couple of weeks, get that taken down, down to the road, we'll be around to help you. Water bills are out, or will be met out, water bills are done, and they'll be due January 30th. And we are getting into the snow season and one minor incident, I guess, insinuate way to put it, one minor snow, but definitely please keep in mind that when it does snow, cars need to be off the street so that the road crews can get in there and do their job. That is all I have, so turn it over to our Town Administrator.
Okay, good evening Mayor and Council, good evening Commissioner Lance and also the members of the community. We'll go ahead and start with the November 2014 Administrative Report. Under Pending Items, no change in our S H A projects. Our Sheets project, Mayor Warner and I have been working with Sheets, the Board of Education and the County Office of Economic Development in keeping the project moving forward on the Sheets expansion. Our Town Hall and Police Department, the development of our construction drawings continue, and this Friday we have a meeting with the County Rep because this project will be taken to the County T R C for review. Under Grants, our M E A grants, both Cycle Three and Four are still under review. Our Civil War Heritage Trails Grant, the design of the A D A entrance is still being developed. Our Community Legacy Grant, there's no change in that. Our P O S and Community Parks and Playground, the Nature Center Classroom Edition and the Athletic Field Lighting is still under review. Our Inclusive Playground Grant, our parking area is complete and we will be meeting on Monday, the 15th with Ms. Bridget Miller of Haley's Wish to move along in regards to the next step in that project. We also submitted M E M A grant for three generators, two at water pumping stations, and one at the new Town Hall and Police Department. And we've also applied for a $25,000 grant through the Institute of Museum and Library Services, so that application has been completed and filed. Under Miscellaneous Items, Chief Hess and I attended the Manchester Valley High School Advisory Committee on November 17th. Currently, we're in the process of completing our Bylaws and our Vision Statement. The Tree Planting Project in conjunction with Carroll County, with Carroll County at the Manchester Farms area is complete. Our Solid Waste and Recycling Bid will be coming up later, that's a line item on the agenda. And I personally like to thank, coming back to the, to the Black Friday celebration, I'd like to thank Dan and Catherine Rowley for donating the Christmas tree out front again, it's a very beautiful tree this year, as in years past. Also like to thank the 5th grade class from Manchester Elementary School for hand making the decorations and bringing them down here and putting them on. And coming back to Black Friday, I'd also like to thank the MAMA group, and I'd like to thank our maintenance crew member, Ken Black. Ken took care of donating his time and driving the tractor and wagon throughout Manchester on Black Friday, so that went, that went very well. One item I'd like for the Council to look at over the next few months, I'd like the Council to look into our current vacation policy for employees that have 20 years or more with the town. Our current policy stops at 20 years as far as accrued vacation. We have three employees, one has 20 years, one has 28 years, and one has 35 years. So I would like the Mayor and Council to look at our policy as it comes to vacation. Moving right along into the Public Works Report, you have in front of you the November 2014 Monthly Water and Waste Water Report. Under Waste Water, the switch over to stream discharge took place on December 1st with no problems. We have an R F B for lining of gravity sewer mains, that's complete, and the bids are due back to us January the 12th. Under N P D S and Stormwater, our Stormwater Facility at the skate park, we've been working very closely with Carroll County on this. Their preliminary cost estimate for this project, as you see, was $864,000. A large portion of the cost, $582,000, was for hauling excess dirt off-site. It appears that S H A is willing to work with both the town and the county in utilizing the excess dirt for the widening of Route 27, which could save both the county, state highways, and the town about $300,000 on this project. The county's going to submit this to the S H A's Transportation Alternative Program and see if it will be funded through that. The facility will treat, as I say in my report, 27 and a half acres of the previous area. Also you have in front of you the first page of the Phase One N P D S permit that was issued from M D E, and you will see on there that no date has been placed on that first page. That's the first page of about a 50-page document. But you will see on there that M D E has included all of the municipalities on that Phase One permit. So we're moving ahead, folks. Hopefully, probably M D E will issue this permit sometime around the 1st of the year, possibly February or March. So, so we're moving ahead on that. Our annual N P D S training took place on November 7th, we had four of our employees attending that. Under Maintenance Roads and Parks, we took delivery of a 6125 M John Deere tractor on November 8th. I'd like to thank Delbert Green, our Water Supervisor, for heading up this project. Our leaf pickup is finished for the season. I'd like to thank our maintenance and office staff on the fine job they did with the holiday decorations throughout the town and Town Hall. As Mayor Warner alluded to, we did have one snow vent on November 26th, about five inches of snow. Also, one thing I want to remind the folks in Manchester Farms, the town has taken over responsibility for salting and plowing Manchester Farms Section 6. Be advised when the snow emergency plan goes into effect, but especially those streets, you can't be parking on those streets. It causes some problems for the, for the town folks out there plowing the snow. And also, one other thing is to keep the basketball nets back because it's tough for the trash trucks and also our large dump trucks when we're salting the streets out there, so keep the basketball nets back. Road salt availability, Commissioner Lance, you might want to listen to this. There's a couple of issues with the availability of road salt. S H A has switched their suppliers. They switched their suppliers to Morton Salt Company. So until Morton Salt gets into the program, kind of figures out what they're doing, there's a little bit of a lull, and the amount of salt that's waiting at the docks really isn't there. And you have everybody scrambling to try to get the contract started, trying to get salt in. We're being a little bit proactive to that. We have, we're on the state highways contract, we have the availability to draw all state highway salt bin right out here on 27. We have the availability of drawing off the county stockpile down at the county, and we were a little bit more proactive, we contracted with Harvey Salt Company. So, I feel right now we're pretty comfortable with the stockpile that we have, but as the season goes on, things can get a little dicey and salt may be hard to come by, road salt may become, hard to come by. So I just want to keep that in the back of your mind. So, right now, I feel pretty comfortable in the stockpile that we have, but again, as the season goes on, we have to watch ourselves a little bit. Our employee Christmas luncheon is December 23rd at the Fire Department Activities Building starting at noon. Please stop by and, and, you know, talk to the employees, have meal with us, we're having pit beef, pit turkey, steamed shrimp, things like that. So stop up, I know a couple of folks are going to bring some, you know, some food along, so that'd be perfect, starting at noon. And that's about it. From the employees and our families, we'd like to wish the Mayor and Council a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Any questions for me?
Steve?
The salt bin state down 27, can anybody else draw from that, or is it just basically the state and us?
Uh, they may have some outside firms, I can't answer that.
I'm curious.
Yeah, so, and we're, we're not allowed to go there now because they're that short, you know, so.
So then what are we talking about? Just what we have?
Excuse me?
So we can't draw on the salt on my 27, did I hear you correctly?
Right now.
Right now.
Right, they're rationing.
So all we have is what we have?
What we have, and then of course, we have the county that we can draw.
For now.
If we have to, and then we have that fourth, or the other contract with Harvey Salt. Correct.
Steve, would you please refresh my memory on what we're considering is for the Athletic Field Lighting? What kind of things are we looking at?
Uh, we looked into replacement poles, well actually the whole, the whole works, new poles, new wiring, new energy efficient lamps for the lower field.
Adequate for baseball and football?
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
And that's a grant, right Steve?
That is correct.
That's a grant, that's applying for.
Yes.
Which we get up to speed, I think we've talked about a couple of times, but the field now, we have, and I don't know the age of it, Steve, and I've talked a couple of times, it might be 30, 35 years old, the lighting that's up there, there's been some issues with, with things just falling down, we've had crossbars just come down in windstorms, the ballast that are up there have also, you know, starting to, you know, fade and not work, and they'll get knocked off in a big windstorm and dangle, and so this would be something to just kind of overhaul and bring up to speed, and the lighting that's currently there is barely adequate for anything, let alone baseball, so they won't play baseball games there at night, because however they measure the light, it's not enough to throw a ball fast at somebody and then have one hit back. Any other questions for Steve? All right, Chief Hess?
Thank you. The Manchester Police Department did handle 62 calls for service. We did have three Part One crimes this go-around, two were for theft, one was for burglary. Both thefts have been cleared by arrest. The burglary is still under investigation, that may be a possible insurance fraud. We did, out of the six arrests, we also conducted a search and seizure warrant on Main Street. The address was 3065 Main Street. He was a significant drug dealer that was dealing in Hampstead in Pennsylvania. A lot of his customers were coming into our town. We conducted two undercover operations which led to that search warrant. We did seize various types of narcotics and 6,500 U.S. currency. Year-to-date, we seized $16,000 in drug proceeds off two cases, both of them were major dealers. One was operating in Hampstead, but he was doing his business up here in Manchester, and then of course this one as well. We did have one DUI arrest this go-around, that was pretty interesting. She drank a whole bottle of mouthwash, 26% alcohol, she didn't even know what town she was in. That was, it was pretty, it was pretty shameful, she was 54 years old. As far as traffic enforcement goes, there's still a hot issue on Haley Avenue. We did hit Overlook and Bachman Road this go-around, as well as York Street. Six state citations were issued and 23 warnings. The 23 warnings unfortunately were our residents. We're still having a problem with our own residents speeding through the neighborhoods. Just a little bit of data, and as Commissioner Lance knows, you know, the drug effort county-wide is going to increase. Most of the sheriff and all the chiefs are in complete collaboration for this fight, and I just wanted to throw out some raw numbers year-to-date. We've had 203 overdoses county-wide. 60 of them were due to heroin, 75 of them were due to prescription medications, painkillers and things like that. As far as, as they identify Patrol Area Two, which consumes Manchester, there was 13 total, two of which resulted in deaths from heroin. Manchester itself had four, we had zero deaths and one was a, one was a heroin OD. Hampstead, they've had 21 cases year-to-date as well. The most impacted age is between the age of 25 and 34, and then it starts to go pretty sporadic from there. But that age group, both in the deaths as well as the suicides and the overdoses is consistent between 24, or what did I say, 25 and 35 years, 34 years of age. Countywide, we's all, we also had 66 suicides or serious attempts, and they seem to be increasing, that could be because of the holidays and things of that nature. But on the heels of that also, Westminster P D, Chief Jeff Spalding and Amy Baker from Councilperson Black, is that Carroll County Health?
Carroll County Health Department's Bureau of Prevention, Wellness and Recovery.
They started a crisis intervention team and basically, you know, unfortunately, the the normal thing that would happen is if you encounter somebody who's on narcotics or they have some type of mental health issue, most of the time arrest was the easiest way out, followed by an emergency petition. And it ended there, and a lot of times they weren't channeled in the right direction to get the help that they needed to get. So they started this crisis intervention team, and it basically, it educates the officers, they're able to handle the situation a little bit better, they create a safe plan for the person who's involved or in need, and then it goes, that person is channeled to the right health department to get the proper treatment. So far, we've had three of them in Manchester, and it's worked. Both times when they showed up to Family Services, they had their health plan in hand, and things were working in the right direction. And so I think that's a pretty good effort by law enforcement, and I can see that expanding probably county-wide. So if anybody has any questions, I'm open.
Any questions for the Chief? Good report. I did have one thing, in addition to Haley and Do Overlook, Bachman, York Street, there's been some social media activity about Southwestern in Washington.
Yes, sir.
And so I was contacted, asked if I would bring it up. I told them that I would, so people are videotaping, I think there's three separate bus stops, I know a lot of bus stops repeat.
We've been in contact with the, the one lady, and we hit the area, but we need to hit the area again.
Okay, yeah, just kind of put that on the list, and
Yes, sir.
All the areas important, but, you know, certainly, there's times of days.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for the Chief? All right, want to welcome Commissioner Steve Lance and
Mayor Warner, thank you very much, the rest of the Town Council, hi, how you doing? Commissioner Steve Lance, the new Commissioner for District One, and I just wanted to stop over this evening to share some of the things that are going on. One of the things that I spoke highly about during the campaign was the fact that communications seemed to be off a bit. So, if you want to call it a bit, you can, you can classify it however you want to classify it. But it's my intent to come out and get to all of the towns and villages in District One as much as possible. Last week, I spent the evening with, with Tawney Town at their Town Council meeting, and when it was over, two hours later, they said they were very surprised that I sat through the whole thing, and I said, well, that's what I'm going to do. So, I just want to point out that there seems to be, doesn't seems to, isn't seems to be, there is a great deal of excitement as the new officers, new elected officials take their positions throughout the county. I think that was well demonstrated when it started off with Sheriff DeWes to a standing-room-only crowd at, at Carroll Community College last week. That in turn followed up with standing-room-only and out in the hallway for the Commissioners. The next day, the Board of Education made mention to the fact that they've never seen the room as full as it was, they didn't have enough chairs, so it goes on and on. And I would be remiss if I didn't point out this evening also, that our thoughts and prayers should be with the Jerry Barnes family. Certainly that was a tragedy for the county. Jerry spent a lot of years here, and we should be very thankful for the, for the time that he spent and the, and the things that he accomplished in that office. As a result of the tragedy, Brian DeLeonardo was sworn in very quickly. He's our interim State's Attorney now, they had to do that for, for legal purposes, and he will be officially sworn in on January the 5th, so we move on there. Just a few things that I want to point out here in following up with, with Chief Hess. Out of the gate, a lot of us are doing a lot of things, there are a lot of things to handle. We don't have a whole lot of time to, to make any transition, if you will. I know some of you have heard probably some, some rumors on the street about the Carroll Area Transit System and the problems that they are having. There was a bit approved from Butler, Butler's out of Baltimore County, and there were some questions, and it kind of hit at a difficult time because three new Commissioners came in, right in the middle of this whole process. So, we had a meeting today, and I think you're going to be pleased with, with what happens here in the next week. I think we're going to make some great strides here with our transportation issues in the county, so more to come on that. I can't be too specific this evening, I can try to answer some questions if there are any, but I think we're going to, we're going to see some great improvements there. More specific note to the Manchester area, and I will do this from time to time, that's just the way I operate. I got a complaint in reference to an accident at Route 30 and Beaver Street. I pass that on to the appropriate folks, and I'm sure if you haven't already, you'll get involved with making sure that the constituent gets the proper answers in reference to that.
That is correct, Commissioner. We have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 17th.
Okay.
For State Highways, Board of Education, and Town of Manchester onsite.
Okay.
With the residents.
Okay, very good, thank you very much, I appreciate that. From the County Commissioner's standpoint and the way in which we do things, for those of you that follow us, we have changed a lot of, well not a lot, but several of the ways in which we are going to handle issues. It used to be that they'd bring something real, to the, to the, to the open meetings, and they would talk about it quickly and make decisions. We are no longer going to do that unless it's something simple. We are now going to make sure that we, that we get a proper presentation of information. We're then going to have the next session for discussion, and then the next session after that for decision. So we're making sure that we get enough input from everybody in order to make proper decisions and not make them so quickly. So, I want everyone to know that too. Present, discuss, and decide, that's how we're, we're going to go forward here. So, that's very important. Chief Hess talked about the drug issue. One of the initiatives way out of the gate for me, I had a meeting with Sheriff DeWes today, I'm going to put together an additional, and I hesitate to call it a task force, Chief, but we're, we're going to give it a clever name, okay? But it is my intent to bring together all of the municipalities and their, and a representative from, from each of those law enforcement. I want some town managers on there, we're going to bring the Board of Education in, obviously Brian DeLeonardo in his office, Jim DeWes in his office, Carroll County Public Schools, I've reached out to the New Services Bureau and several others, and we're going to put together a team to begin to look at this. And the timing is right, because if you've been following state politics, one of the first things that Larry Hogan is going to do is, and he's already done so, is put Boyd Rutherford in charge of a similar task force, if you will. So we feel that the timing here is good, and we can get some great trickle-down effect if we get out there and they see that Carroll is, is very strong about bringing some solution to our problems here. So you'll be hearing more about that very soon after the holidays, and we're looking forward to working with, with everybody on that. On that note, we're all very excited about the fact that there is going to be some fresh air coming from Annapolis, too. So, I want to point out that no one has the magic wand, and we can't fly around and magically everybody's going to be happy. But I do think with, with the folks that are in place, we are very optimistic about down the road here. I think, I think we can, we can all be, be very optimistic again about where we're, we're going to get to, and so we're very much looking forward to working with them also. We will be attending the Rural Association of Counties Conference in January, and we hope to get off on a, on a great note there. Other than that, that's all I have, if there, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I do want to make sure that all of you have a safe holiday season, and I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and certainly a very Happy New Year. And again, there is a breath of fresh air in Carroll from, and from the state down. So when I say Happy New Year, I truly mean Happy New Year. Questions, comments, concerns? Mayor Warner, I'm not going to make a habit of this because I don't like to micromanage, but I encourage any of you at any time, if you have anything that you want to discuss, or if you want me to be here, call me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure to hear from you, and again, look forward to working with you. Art findings, Cliff and Larson Allen.
Good evening, I'm Bill Early, I'm a principal with Cliff and Larson Allen, we are the independent auditors for the town. We had the pleasure this year of coming out and working again once with Kelly, so I'd first like to extend my appreciation to Kelly, her staff, and everybody that we bugged for the two weeks that we're out here, making them pull all the invoices and going through boxes of data. They are very quick to respond to us, which helps us get more efficient, we actually were even more efficient this year, I think. We issued three reports, we issued a audit opinion on the audit of financial statements, it was an unqualified opinion, which is known as a clean opinion in the industry, so that's very good. We conducted our audit in accordance with general accepted auditing standards. Again, I do remind the Council that you are charged with governance, so we also issued a letter to you all, governance letter, that kind of summarizes the findings of the audit. Management is responsible for the preparation of the financial statements, and they do take accountability for that through a management representation letter that they sign. And the third report that we issued was our management letter that we issued, we did have some findings here that we issued that, kind of standing issues, we issued segregation of duties, which you all addressed as one of the motions by accepting the check register, so it was nice to see that that is a control that is in place and working properly. And then we also noted preparation of financial statements, we do assist with the preparation due to the size of the town, we had help with that. And then the third one is, we actually recommended some different kind of procedures over review of the bank recs and just kind of signatures of preparation of those that Kelly has put in place, so. Again, a very good report, there are issues, but those issues are ones that we do mainly due to the size of the town, so we don't have any concern, but we do want to bring those to your attention. But another good audit, nobody went to jail, as Steve likes to say, so once again, we are
Applause.
At this time, I entertain any questions, or anywhere down the line, we can always be available for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Community Media Center update by Sherri Taylor.
Mayor Warner, Council, thank you for the time to speak with you. I'm not Marion Ware, I'm Steve Kirby, Marion, I can't be here, I'm the current Chair of the Board of the Media Center. And while we're here, it's just, we want to punch a couple of points. You received, I hope, a copy of the Mayor's Letter that we sent. The issue is essentially this, I'll try, it's, there's a lot of weeds into this, but it's essentially that the franchise with Cable Regulatory Committee and Commission and Comcast has been renegotiated from 2010, it's supposed to have been done in 2010, here is 2014, we're still working on it. They renegotiated it, we think, and it's complete, but we haven't seen it, and they haven't shown it to us. That's what caused us to go, yikes, I mean, we don't know why we weren't involved in negotiations, why we didn't, we don't know what's in the contract, and we're very concerned. And we simply want to make sure that, or we hope that you don't automatically rubber-stamp the agreement the CRC gives you, next month, February, March, whenever, whenever they, whenever they deliver it, we don't know, we don't know what's in it. But there are three key things that we think, if it's not in there, that we're, that we're at risk, and it's primarily the upgrade of the facility. And 10, 10 years ago, And 10 years ago, we created the facility with CRC money, with the franchise money. Our equipment is 14 years old, and that's about four generations in technology. You can't replace the equipment. You can't buy it. It doesn't exist anymore. And we want to upgrade to DVD like other media centers. We're not asking for upfront. We're not asking for money, but we're asking for that Comcast can allow us enough money to upgrade the facility early on. That's not like they're giving us money. They're kind of forwarding us money that they'll be collecting through the franchise agreement. There's more to it. There's more weeds about the PEG agreement and the business about we would really like a 10-year contract to allow for ability to have a technology review because what's the technology going to be like in 2024? Probably not what we have now. So that's it in a nutshell, and I tried to be quick. There's a couple of other folks who will speak. I think Sherri Hughes and Steve Horn. Thank you.
I will be very, very quick, but I wanted to point out a little bit about what the franchise contract means to you guys and what services we provide. Manchester is unique in the group of eight municipalities, and you have your own channel, but the back end of that channel is operated out of the facility. So as technology gets outdated, and you know, I have a, you know, what kind of phone was I using 10 years ago, and do I use that now? No. A lot of the equipment that we have has reached its end of life, and not only is it not supported, it's difficult to replace and upgrade. So as we upgrade the facility, your channel gets upgraded as well, and part of that would include HD and bringing the quality of what you see up to current standards. This year, we celebrate 25 years of public access in Carroll County, so we're pretty excited about that. And in addition to running the back end of your channel, we also cover a lot of your local events and, you know, Spring Fest and Veterans Day. And Manchester has their own page on our website. We put all your videos on there. The videos are put onto YouTube, and you can also share those on your webpage, on your social media, Facebook and Twitter. And beyond just the coverage, we provide technical assistance and recommendations when you're looking to upgrade equipment, things like that, and also emergency services. That's one of the areas that we've really developed over the past few years. We provide emergency crawls to all the municipalities. You can actually put the crawls on the channel yourself, and we're actually going to be contacting everybody to kind of go through a refresher course because it's been since last winter, so we've all forgotten how to do that. If you can't do it yourself, you can always just contact us, say, hey, we want to put something up. We had a water main break, or we're going to have a road closing. We'll be more than happy to put a crawl up on the channels, put it on social media, put it on our website. Anywhere we can send that information out to let local residents know. A couple of things that we also have on the website. One is a program that we call Celebrate, and that's an opportunity for you to celebrate local individuals who are doing great things. Maybe you have a business that's doing a ribbon cutting. You've got someone who is celebrating a milestone birthday or an anniversary of a business, or someone's been promoted or made a donation, received a donation. You can send us a picture and a little write-up. We'll put it up on Facebook, on social media, on our website, on the channel, pretty much everywhere we can think to do it, just to share that good news and the great things that are happening. We think that the more people hear about things like that, the more they're willing to do it themselves. The other element that we have on our website is our community calendar, and I would really encourage you all to use that. We just had our meeting every year. We get all the municipalities together for our annual planning meeting, and we just had that last week. We were talking about the community calendar, and on your municipal page of our website, the community calendar exists there. We've just been able to actually tailor all of the events that are on your page to specifically Manchester events. So if you put those, the information that you put on your community calendar gets automatically funneled onto our page as well, so it just kind of doubles your exposure. In addition to that, your local residents can go on our website at carrollmediacenter.org, and they can enter events that are happening themselves. It doesn't have to just be the municipality. Local organizations, fundraisers, churches, all sorts of local events can be entered there. There's nothing registered. It's free, and it's a great way to get the word out. And as I said, we had our yearly planning meeting. We have a survey that we send to all the municipalities, ask what specific events you would like us to cover. So if there's something that you know you have big coming up this year, please let us know about that. And also, what we're trying to do this year is concentrate, too, on economic development. So if you know of things that are coming into your municipality, or there's ways that we can help you spread the word about economic development issues, please let us know. Again, any ideas that you have, give us a call. That's what we're there for. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Steve Horn. Actually, I work for the city of Westminster. It's kind of nice to be up here in Manchester, and I've been in this town hall several times, recognize a few faces, and I notice I go back quite a ways on some of the pictures on these walls. I know a bunch of these folks, but that says a lot about maybe how long I've been around. But we, as a representative from the CMC board, I tend to put this in terms that a municipality might understand. We're talking about a, if you think about it as a utility that we've delayed maintenance on. It's something that we, the longer you wait, the more cost to get it back to an acceptable level where you want it to be, your desired level of service. We'd like to get the CMC to a point where we can continue to be a partner with you. I think this whole franchise agreement really is more about the municipalities and the services they provide, the information they provide to the citizens, some of the things that Sherri hit on, the value to emergency services, to the announcements that we can make in times when bad storms or other, you know, events that need to be broadcast to the citizens. We have to be thinking along those lines. But I also think, just at a more basic level, places like Manchester, other jurisdictions in Carroll County, we have a lot of people that drive out of the county every day to work. They get back late. They're leaving early. They'd love to be a little bit more involved. They'd like to maybe participate, but their schedules just don't allow it. This kind of thing here with the broadcast that takes place, people can catch this at home. They can watch it later. They can, you know, we could set it up so there's some interactive processes. Sherri mentioned it gives direct access to your website. It creates all kinds of opportunities for Manchester to take advantage of. So we're looking at a pretty expensive upgrade here pretty soon. We're concerned that the terms of the franchise agreement aren't going to quite get there for us. Now, we're not putting all our eggs in that basket. We are looking at other opportunities to raise funds. We realize we have to become more of a, a little bit more aggressive in that department. But at the same time, I think it's important that the municipalities, the powers that be, the folks that signed this franchise agreement, understand that it's important to the citizens of the county that the franchise agreement covers the needs that we needed to cover. If not, then I think we continue to delay that maintenance, and we continue to fall further behind, and I think we lose a valuable resource, and I think we lose the ability to broadcast some of the neat things you're doing here and across the county. So we appreciate your time tonight. Certainly good to be back in Manchester. If there's anything we can do to provide any additional information, you know, feel free to contact us, and by all means, go out on the CMC website and check it out. If you do the Facebook thing, like us on Facebook, right? Is that the proper terminology? I'm still getting that myself. But why I'm on the board is a real mystery sometimes. Anyway, that's where we are. We certainly appreciate the time tonight. Yes.
I have a couple of questions. I guess one big one is, and I apologize for my ignorance on the process, but can you just enlighten me on the timeline? What are we looking at as far as responses and information?
Yeah, I think we're, we actually went to the Cable Regulatory Commission meeting a few months back, and I think they're looking at releasing at least the draft of the franchise agreement any time now. I'm going to say.
It may be Thursday.
Okay, pretty soon. And so that's going to be, you know, available for inspection pretty soon. So we'll get a good idea about the kinds of funds that are going to be available for the public benefit aspect of the franchise agreement. So that could be before you fairly soon for your consideration and approval. And I think what we'd like to do is to, before kind of it gets to final approval, we just would like an opportunity to weigh in to see if it's, if there are opportunities for us to hopefully increase the funding for things like moving equipment forward, creating opportunities for high-def broadcasts and that type of thing, which is what, you know, I mean, your cell phones are doing better than the equipment we have at the CMC these days. I mean, that's kind of the long and the short of it. So it costs money to get this place, to get us up to, you know, current standards. So that should be pretty soon, though.
I will say a few things. I am the representative from Manchester Council. You've probably seen me there several times. And Carol Scholver's here also from Cable Commission, and she may be able to answer any questions. But we do have a meeting Thursday, and I know you were there last, the last time or the time before that, because we discuss it at every meeting, and we do want it to move along. Everybody in the different municipalities that I've spoken to feels the same way. Please don't feel that anybody's going to put a rubber stamp on it. Nobody's doing that, and we do want it to move along. I know it has been extended until February. I don't know when it will be approved, and Carol can probably tell you more of that, but I do know they're working on it. We've had this discussion a lot of times at a lot of meetings, and, you know, they really are working on it. Nobody's trying to put you on the back burner, and I know it's probably very frustrating, and we appreciate everything you do as far as, I mean, everything you do for our town, I know, and I'm sure all the other municipalities do as well. But I know they are working on it, but she may be able to answer more questions if there's anybody here that has any. I know we have a meeting Thursday, but, you know, I don't know what that's going to bring.
And it's been a few, it's been a while. I mean, this thing, it is a complicated process, and we appreciate that as well. We're just into a planning process. Now we have to start thinking about budgeting.
I do understand. I do understand.
Okay. Thank you for your service there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And it's like the guys on Facebook, too.
One more friend.
Steve, you want to go with the trash bids?
I think I'm going to pass the mic down to Kelly.
Okay.
Kelly took the lead on this. Get a fine job.
As you know, for renewal with our trash contract, we currently have Hughes Trash Services, and we sent out bids for a three-year contract as well as another five-year contract just to see the price differential. We've received three bids back, one from Hughes, one from J&amp;J Trash Services, and one from Ecology Services. I know they do Hampstead. And so we met and received the bids. I prepared a spreadsheet for you all to be able to look to see what we were currently paying, not just for picking up trash and recyclables, but also for dumpsters, for the bulk trash, for the Christmas trees. And we also looked at the option of doing weekly yard waste pickup from the months between April and November to see, would that be something that would, we'd be able to take care of all the residents and be able to afford it as well? So in the spreadsheet, if you have that in front of you, what I did was lay out the five-year prices, what they laid out per item, and then what I did in the last column was look at a yearly cost between all three vendors. What was interesting was Ecology gave us one price per unit, and there's 1,860 units to do everything, which was unusual in, as long as I've been here. I guess this is probably the fourth trash bid I've been through, and I have not seen that, so that was interesting. But in order to compare apples to apples as best we could, I priced out what it would be for the services for one year, and as you can see, Hughes and J&amp;J Trash were comparable line item by line item when you go down all of them, and where the difference was is in the yard waste pickup. They were, J&amp;J was twice as much for yard waste pickup as Hughes. That being said, also, J&amp;J asked us to consider being able to have two trash pickups in Manchester, meaning half the town would be saved on a Tuesday and the other half would be on Wednesday. That was something that I didn't know how to even address, and Steve can remember when the town picked up their own trash, and he said there was issues with finally getting everybody on one day. So he can discuss that. That's been 20, 20-plus years ago.
You moved the residents' cheese, and they were always used to Monday and Friday pickup when we signed the contract with Hughes way back when. We switched it to Wednesday, and it took a while for the residents to be used to that. So when you switch up like that, especially two-day pickup, it's confusing. You start getting the phone calls. It's something I'll add to that.
Again, the yard waste was an option. For the first year, it would be $13,000, and that would involve residents getting their yard waste picked up once a week. It does involve residents buying the brown bags, the recycled biodegradable bags. I did, Steve, refresh my memory. They did say, though, that if you had a trash can that had, you know, grass clippings in it, they would be able to take that and dump that in there.
That is correct, yes. It wasn't just strictly brown bag.
Right.
If you wanted to designate a trash.
Right, but they don't want plastic bags. They're not going to do what, you know, we've done one or two times when we've done the yard waste pickup, once in the fall and once in the spring, where we'll just kind of leave the bags there for them to take care of. They're not, they don't want that.
That's for eight months.
Mm-hmm.
Yard waste pickup for eight months.
Mm-hmm. Once a week from April through November. And Steve mentioned that this will actually help with our stormwater management goals.
Yes, I mean, we can, you know, we can show that we, you know, we're doing a yard waste pickup through the town. It'll help, you know, grass clippings and things of this nature. It'll also help us add our brush dump off Water Street, you know, keep that. We've had some issues in the past up there.
Could you go into that, Steve? Because I wanted to get that on the record, what we discussed this afternoon.
Yeah, a few years ago, we used to keep the yard waste area off Water Street open all the time. Unfortunately, one night, we had a load of batteries and tires dumped on us with a load of trash along with that. So of course, our folks had to spend the time to pick it up, take it to the proper locations and dispose of it. So we limited that down to just Mondays from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then the phone starts ringing off the hook because, you know, folks, you know, I work during the day. I don't have time to get up there, and then it opens up a whole nother can of worms for the folks. So I think this is another out if we do the yard pickup within the trash.
Plus, we're still seeing plastic bags.
We're still seeing some trash bags up there, yes. So it's not as abused as it was before because it's monitored a little bit closer after our incident up there. So yes, this would definitely help us out.
I've had a lot of requests for that. A lot of people have mentioned that to me as well, so.
Correct.
Steve, I'm sorry, because I was taking some notes. They were consistent in their bids except for the yard waste. What could have been the difference? It's double.
Well, to be honest with you, we actually contacted both the haulers because the difference in price just, there's no, there's something, obviously, there's got to be something in there. So we called them. We said, okay, we'll make sure we're using the same calculation and how you are doing it, and they said absolutely. That's exactly what they meant, and I said, okay, we're just making sure.
Estimates based on all the same factors, all the same considerations?
Yep.
Wow. I like the idea of the yard waste, weekly yard waste.
I think that's a plus.
Does Hughes provide the yard waste service in other areas? In other words, with such a disparity in estimates, you know, I'm getting at.
I don't. I don't...
Do they know what they're getting themselves into? That's the question.
I'm going to say, yes, they do. I know they do New Windsor.
Don't they have a track record?
Yes. They know what they're getting themselves into. Yes. Yeah, we have that on their, on the reference sheet.
New Windsor, Union Bridge, Tontytown.
They do yard waste pickup there?
Yes.
Okay, good. Will you make a motion that we accept the Hughes bid?
I second the motion.
Motion is seconded. Any other discussion or questions? I don't suppose there's ever been any past performance issues. We're very comfortable with continuing with...
We are. You want to allude to that, or you want me to?
Yeah, it's not...
Yeah, we've had, we've had very good luck with Hughes in the past. Any complaints that come in, we transfer right to their folks, and they're very responsive right away. Very few complaints. Maybe on trash days, not even a call, it might go for several weeks before we get a call.
Good, okay.
What you try to get to the heart is because it's surprising how the drivers know what households do. So if, for example, there's a new resident, and they don't realize maybe they need to put trash on one side of their driveway and recycling on the other, because maybe their recycling's not marked properly, then the driver will go and pick up everything as trash. So we try to figure out, okay, what is going on? And for the most part, they are very responsible to us.
I've been very pleased over the years. I was just curious if anything else?
They even bring dog biscuits.
And for example, like walk, maybe like a chair, or a big TV, you know, you're thinking, okay, that's block, I got to wait till November or October or what have you. And we tell people, call Hughes, because there might be something there that they may take during your pickup. There's always going to be some that are going to complain, but you're surprised how many people who, if they don't have their trash picked up by noon, are calling us. It occurred to me that I would call and find out why my trash wasn't picked up. They're going to get to it, but they do handle as best they can.
I suspect that was the case. I just wanted that out.
One thing I wanted to add, I did the figures for recycling from January to June. I don't have the second half of the year. But we're running 27.1% recycling, which is very good. Councilperson Howe brought up a very good point, and I mentioned this about a year and a half ago. If we try to either purchase or through a grant, get larger recycling bins, I think that you'll see those numbers go up, because the recycling bins that are being used are small recycling bins. When they get full, it's just common nature, I'm going to throw out the trash can. So we lose out on that. So that's something that we can look into, so...
Steve, as we know, when we discussed this about a year ago, we were hovering around 16% for a long time, like a number of years.
We were 16, 18, 20, 22%, yeah. So I think this number is probably going to stay pretty consistent once I get the second half of the year numbers in. I'm pretty happy with that. We can do better, though.
And if we get larger containers, you're going to see a significant increase.
I know the county, I know the county offered some larger containers, recycling containers to the county residents, so maybe if they do that bid process again, maybe we can piggyback on to their bid process. You know, maybe not, maybe not for all the residents that first go around, but maybe for half of the residents, and we'll go from there, so...
In coming progress, it's still progress. What about the issue we had with them picking trash at really early in the morning? Were they able, are they really responsive to that?
Well, they, I will tell you, I made the phone call, and I do know, to be quite frank, during the summertime when we have heat waves, like a lot of contractors, they like to get their people in and out as best they can. They did ask for some consideration in the bid as far as being able to, they said their hours are between 7:00 and 4:00, and sometimes 6:00 o'clock seems to get them on a schedule to get everything done in one day. They asked us to consider something before the traffic and school kicks in, get in and get out. We haven't addressed that yet.
Yeah, I think if we worked with them, if you were picking up trash cans at 6:00 as opposed to banging dumpsters at 6:00, it's kind of a difference. But I mean, if you pull it in front of a house, it's like, it's not going to be, it's not much noisier to dump the trash cans than it is just to drive by. I think the issue was they were banging a dumpster around.
The top loaders and the rear loaders, I mean, they make a lot of noise.
Yeah.
Especially once the dig-o can all conclude back up.
I think if we could keep them doing banging dumpsters...
They're no louder than the school buses coming from the neighborhood, in my opinion, because they follow each other right through my neighborhood, and it's really no different.
I think if you're picking up a trash can at 6:00, they can start right with, all I care.
They will.
They will. I'm old, anyway. All right, we have a motion in a second. Does any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting Hughes' trash bid, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. We have questions and comments from the community. Anybody sign in? Signed up? Mr. Gary? Who did not sign up?
He's a regular. He can...
My name is Guy Gary. I'm with Mala, the Manchester Emergency Merchants Association, and I just want to thank the mayor, the council people, Steve Miller, and all the town employees, Chief Hess in the Police Department, Auxiliary Police Department, and of course, the Fire Department for all their help with the Black Friday event this year. It's a big event. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that happen. I just wanted to thank everybody for their assistance with that. It went off very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to committee reports. Councilman Smith?
I have a meeting on Thursday, so I'll have my report.
Do we have yours?
You already have mine.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Councilman Black?
Couple of updates. We did have a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on November the 10th, and just to update everybody, the Manchester Farm Section 7 is going under a considerable amount of comments, and so that's being put off for a bit, and they weren't able to present in November, and they won't in December. The Harold property was presented to us, and Mr. Harold's property is located off of Hilltop Drive, and he's proposing 14 lots plus one existing to happen up there. So we went through that process, and there was a couple of comments, and then they'll be coming back. I'm not sure if we're having a meeting in December.
No.
Okay, so I guess in January, perhaps we'll learn more, just so you guys know. All is well.
Councilman Pacelli?
We've covered the Black Friday event. Only complaint was a little chilly.
Yeah. We couldn't control that piece this year. Councilman Howe?
I attended the meeting last month, nothing of significance, and there is no December meeting. We resume in January.
Very good. Councilman Walder?
Joint Use Agreement. I know we've been very busy. Would like to get back to that very shortly with the comments, but I think as long as we have something in place this week, this winter, before the spring sports kicks in, I think we'll be okay. Steve, the sports programs that are up there now, they're all cleaned up? Is everything to our satisfaction for the town?
I can't say that, because Mayor Warner might answer this question. The lights were on just the other night, last night, maybe?
On last night?
Or Friday? I seen the lights on.
I know that there's been practices up there.
Okay.
They're probably because they played a game on, I want to say, Sunday?
Okay.
So they may have been practicing. I was not there, so...
So still teams going.
So, yeah, we're still...
Okay. Then we'd expect them to be cleaned up.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. I know the Joint Use Agreement's on me. There's been some things. I'll catch up with you guys.
We'll get to that, as long as I think, as long as it's before spring. That's it for me.
You, Representative?
I'm just... I'm recording. Just to add a few, just to add a few comments from Manchester Valley. Right now, we have our holiday campaign going on, which we're collecting pretty much anything you would donate, like clothes, food, toys, anything to help people through the holiday season. It's all going to Co-Human Services, so that's it.
And does one of you know the details? I think we should mention the tree of friends tree we have up front. One of you have the details and when that's closing.
I'm looking at Michelle, because I know she's been...
I know that it's soon, so...
I believe, I believe tomorrow is supposed to be the deadline.
If you leave, grab a tag, and, you know, if you can get it back to us, we'll hustle up and get that, you know, get the items that you picked off the tree, we'll get it to the group.
Yeah, I think there's a few, so if anybody here feels so inclined to grab a tag on the way out...
Even though the deadline is at 10, you know, we'll keep going.
Yeah, it's a good group of folks that run that organization. I think if we got back to them with, we have some things coming back, they'd, you know, be more than happy to work with us on that.
And it's for, it's for clothes. They're not even asking for toys.
Right.
Hats and gloves and coats.
Right, right. And that's important. So sometimes, you know, when we do these things, you will see, like, oh, this is a PlayStation 6 game or whatever, but this really is. They do a good job of finding people that are actually in need and then getting them things that they need that, you know, a lot of us take for granted.
I thought you said there were over 200 children.
I think there are over 200. Just a nanny. Yeah. Yeah, we have a tree here, we have a couple trees at the Fire Department. I think a couple trees, we're going to go in BB&amp;T Bank and also Dutch Corner Restaurant. So feel free to grab a tag. These two are good calls.
Very good. Anything else for this group? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All right, good night, everyone.